They should, this is basic, they should have developed it with that. So that puts, that puts the onus on the development because it was T C E Q requirement that they didn't follow. And it's not on the city to, to make sure that, that, to help them come up to a standard on their, on their development. It's on the development and the T C E Q um standard right here is, is the information that you take from the same because they did not. According to T C E Q thirty T A C two nine zero, subchapter B, they're, they're responsible for the cost of the backflow.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Should, shouldn't something be, I'm, I'm sorry, but shouldn't something be in our ordinance saying who pays?
No, Mr. Mayor, listen.
I'm, I'm asking.
I'm telling you, Mr. Mayor, it's a private, so, so it's a private lift station. Camp, uh Campus Edge has a private lift station, they're tapping into the public system.
Okay, so this is, this is at their lift station?
Their private lift station tapping into our public line, which means.
This is at a lift station?
The backflow.
I mean, uh.
Uh, that's what I'm saying, see, it's not connected to a private lift station.
They're have, whatever they have is private, they're connected into the, the public city utility. That's why you have to have the backflow on there. Mister Bostick has said this for months now. The, 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 there's emails that you're on, that the developers on, when they were told how much it costs. They were supposed to do this on their own. Guess what they did? They didn't do it because it costs money. And, and then we didn't catch it, we gave them the, 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 uh permit anyway. This should've been something that should've been for the beginning and you're on the email.
Do me a favor, if you would, if you don't mind, forward me the emails, it might have what I'm asking for.
Again, what you're asking.
All I'm asking for is the documentation.
Documentation of what, Mr. Mayor?
What you just said.
Well, the city, the city paid for something that the developer should've done. We just need to send them the bill of twenty thousand dollars and we should, you're asking, should we give them a fine? I don't necessarily know if there's a, a issue where we should find them, but we asking just for the money that the city put out. Why? Because it was a public health and safety issue, you said pay, you said do it.
I said get it done.
Get it done, correct, and so we're saying now Campus Edge and Panther Hill needs to reimburse the city.
Okay, send me the email so I have what I need, anything else, sir?
Mr. Mayor, due to the fact that this is a private development.
Yeah, but see, where, where it have, we don't have impact fees, that's my whole point.
Yeah, but that's, that had nothing to do with the impact, that, this is a T C E Q requirement that they found.
Yeah, it's a requirement, but it's not, we don't.
Their property.
But it's not a requirement for the city, it's a requirement for the development.
Hold on, Councilor, do you happen to have any thoughts or information on this? Because I just need to have what I need, just like you do, when we tell them, not that it's a requirement, but why is it a requirement that they do it versus us? I just wanna have it in writing, just like we cited ordinance on other things.
Yeah, so I haven't been asked to look into this because you asked Mister Bostick to look into it, Mister Bostick told us to look into it and he gave it to you. And he gave it to you several times and it was my understanding that you had already agreed that they would be built for it. But I haven't looked into it, if you want me to look into it, I can look into it, but.
I, I do, only because all Mister Bostick gave us was state law requirements. It doesn't say who and what.
Why would we spend more money, why would we spend more money having to try to review it?
Well, why, why can't you refer to the ordinances and the other things?
State law trumps city ordinances anyway.
Right, but the state law doesn't say who, it just says what.
So will we, will, will we need a backflow if they didn't, weren't developing?
There was on, on, in Au- August, September thirtieth, there was a letter that went from Paramount, which does the, the inspection and consulting services to the city of Prairie View that went out. They knew what, it, it talks specifically about the backflow, they decided not to do it. We do not need to spend any more money on the attorney reviewing this. We've already paid for it, Mister Bostick has told you, who has to pay for it? Do you have, do we need to get on record that, that you have any, any, uh financial investment in Camp, Panther Hill?
You can get on record for any damn thing you want.
Can you answer the question, Mister Mayor? Do you have a financial?
No, this is a legal question.
So then why would you not want them to pay the city back the money?
All I want is the documentation that we need, you said you have an invoice, I asked you to give me the email.
Mister, Mister. Bostick had provided you what you needed, Mister Mayor.
He said state law requirements, it doesn't say anything on here in terms of who pays.
Well, why would we pay for something that the developer?
Well, first, first we pay because it was brought to our attention that it was a T C E Q violation. So, just like we did at the dentist, we fix it and then we go after whoever we're supposed to go after. And all I'm asking Councilor Roland to do is give me the so-called documentation he has, so we can include it in the letter that y'all were supposed to do this, here's why, write to check.
Mister Bostick brought us back that information?
Read that, all he did was sign a state statute, and the statute isn't clear on who's supposed to do it. Just says supposed to be done, yes, sir.
This, this situation is similar to if there is a, a, an abandoned home that's, that's a hazard, that's a safety issue into the city and the city goes through and, and demolishes the building and then the city goes back and retrieves those funds from the owner of the house, this is the same thing. It's a, there, there's a state mandate that requires, um homes and things to be at a certain standard and if they're not at the certain standard and the city has to go in to get it up to standard, it's, it's common knowledge that the, that the city goes to the, the person that falls to recover the funds that the city's paid.
I'll, 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 I'll look, I'll look up, I don't understand why Councilor Roland just won't give me a copy, I'm just saying, give me the document, I'll go look it up, I'll go look it up and I get it done.
You said that last week.
Well, you didn't give me the document either, and we didn't meet last week.
Last, well, the last meeting you, you said that. And I'm saying, why is it, why do you have, so, you, you said you were gonna do it first, you didn't have the invoice, now you got the invoice and you still talk about, you don't wanna, uh, ask for the twenty thousand dollars?
Mister Bostick just gave us this.
No, he didn't.
And the folks have no problem paying their bills like some people.
No, they owe, they owe, they, they owe a hundred thousand dollars in water bills, so we can, we can talk about it.
You owe twenty eight hundred in water bills, so what's the difference? I did show you, spent on the gym twice. You shouldn't ask him what you don't want, what's the next item?
Could, the question is, are we gonna attach that to, are we gonna attach?
I'll, I'll check into it and get it done.
Are we gonna attach the issue that Mister, that USW brought up in reference to, uh, the exterior vault tank to be connected to?
Uh, Councilor Randall, you have the questions?
Uh, uh, Mister Henry Griffin, question. Can the city council, uh, make recourse if the mayor sends a letter to the developers of Campus Edge and Panther Hill to recover the, the taxpayer funds that were expended to, to, uh, install the backflow? In, in the event that that's not done, and, and we, we attach the time to it, in the event that that's not done, can we go back to that same standard that we went to, that the mayor failed to act and then it falls on to the mayor? Yes?
Those are all policy decisions within the discretion of the city council to make.
Mister Mayor.
Councilor Randall.
I move that you write a letter to, to the developers of Campus Edge and Panther Hill Department to, to recoup, um, what is the total?
Ninety nine hundred and seventy times two.
Ninety nine thirty seven forty one.
Times two. To recover nineteen thousand eight hundred seventy four thousand dollars eighty two cents for the city's installation of the backflow pumps, um, within the next ten days. Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that the mayor sent to the developers the, the recoup, to recoup the cost of the nine thousand nine hundred and thirty seven dollars and forty one cents times two as what?
Nineteen thousand eight hundred seventy four dollars eighty two cents.
I'm sorry?
Nineteen thousand seven hundred, nineteen thousand eight hundred seventy four dollars.
Nineteen thousand eight hundred seventy four dollars.
And eighty two cents.
And eighty two cents. You've heard the motion, ready for the question?
Question.
All in favor?
Uh.
Motion passed.
Appreciate it, Mister Henry. I'm gonna read, uh. Move back, move going to item nine and ten because.
Okay, code enforcement report for January two thousand twenty update. Uh, Ms. Taylor Lopez and Ms. Hunter, would you like to share with us some other questions?
I passed out a report, uh, to you, you're quite welcome for it. These subdivisions that are included in this report, Park, Purp, Purpson Heights, Hillcrest, Pine Island, Prairie Hills and Prairie View Court. I want you to see in parentheses, in Hillcrest, that property owner had eleven, eleven lots that all required letters. In, uh, Pine Hill, uh, yeah, Pine Island, I'm sorry. That prop, one property owner had three that required letters. So actually, even though ten, uh, fourteen letters went out, it covered another fourteen properties. And that makes a total of twenty eight properties that were addressed this month, uh, for, uh, code enforcement. There was one citation, uh, I think we're beginning to, to make some progress on the, uh, apartment complex there off of Eccles. And that's whole block, actually. Uh, to date, since the inception of code enforcement, we have, um, opened two hundred twenty nine cases. Now, code enforcement does not tell anyone to do anything. All code enforcement does is point out what you're doing wrong. Makes them aware, exactly. And the, um, the judge and the police department tell them what to do, we just make them aware. So, um, I will be doing ride-alongs with officers since some people are getting, uh, kinda antsy about seeing people drive by taking pictures of their property. So to keep me safer, I'll be riding with, uh, police officers. Uh, and when those people take time to call any of you and tell you that we're picking on them, please take time to drive by their property and see what's really going on. So, I'm going to be doing ride-alongs, I'm asking that you do drive-bys. So drive by those properties and see, and help us.
So is it, is it appropriate when we do drive-bys?
You know, you just drive, they go by.
Is it, is it appropriate if we see something, we drive by to, to contact you and say, hey?
Most definitely, that's what I want you, that's what we need you to do in code enforcement.
Okay.
So we need you to help us, and I appreciate it, um, Councilman, uh, Jones.
Tried to step on toes, so I, I didn't know if that was good.
I tried not to. Councilman Jones had mentioned something last meeting, where a resident had mentioned something to him. But, you know, I'm glad that they are talking, but make sure you drive by and help us. Let them know we all on the same page, you know, you're not gonna play with you guys against code enforcement. Okay.
Any other questions for Ms. Hunter?
Thank you, Ms. Hunter.
Uh, Ms. Hunter, I've got one.
Yes, sir.
Um, in, having been actively involved in code enforcement, uh, from day one, I'm seeing two hundred twenty nine cases, that tells me there've been two hundred twenty nine ten-day notices.
Right.
I'm only seeing one citation.
Oh, that's just for January.
Okay, but still, how many, if you could come back, out of those two hundred and twenty nine? Because what we're riding around seeing is still a part of this two twenty nine. So, we need to get an update and get citations on all the folks on the two twenty nine who haven't complied. So that's the thing that drug them into court initially, when I made some mistakes, they came into court and they cut their stuff. So, let's work on the citation part, which I think goes through P D, not yourself.
Right.
Okay, so.
Make those citations, I just make them away.
Right, so, uh, we'll have Chief or his people get with you on what's the status of these two twenty nine? And why haven't these other people gotten citations? Otherwise, we're calling you, they're getting ten-day notices, but they have no incentive to fix it if they don't feel.
Some of them I have personally been by and they have, they are correcting them. So, rather than getting a citation, and we're not trying to give people citations, we just want them to correct me.
Right, we just have so much issue in the city, that I know a lot of this is still an issue and we need to move to the next step, whatever that takes. So whatever you need or Chief needs, we need to get everybody else, cause it, like, the people that are complying, it's not fair to them to get the same ten-day notice and the others don't comply and they get nothing.
Correct.
Okay.
I was gonna say, I think it's important to also note, if you're gonna note the number of citations out of the two twenty nine, you can note the number of people coming to comply, so it's kinda like a two-category thing, so out of this two twenty nine, X amount came to comply, X amount missed a citation.
But that's since, you know, that's since the very beginning.
Right.
Any other question?
Thank you, appreciate your hard work.
And P P P D report.
Council members, it's there. City Prairie View, it's left. Thank you for coming. January twenty nineteen, I conducted a police operational survey. Some concerns regarding police services for the citizens of Prairie View weigh heavily on my mind. The department was and still is understaffed and cannot meet citizens' basic police fundamentals in regards to police services. My objective is to make sure that as police department, we are able to provide quick response services when citizens call number one. In doing so, I plan on bringing in four more patrol officers that have already been selected, processed through the system, hiring procedures, and I will request another funding to be released by the city council. This will give the city at any given time two to three officers available for the citizens of Prairie View to have twenty-four seven police coverage. It will also be a safe environment for the officers when responding to shootings, which we had two last week. Endangered cars where the officers need to be focused on the threat and watch where he is actually going to. So not to cause himself injuries to what already happened, with one officer injuring himself a week ago responding to a shooting alone. On January nineteenth, approximately nine forty-five P M, we had a shooting on Pioneer Avenue where a young man was shot in the lower back, pop box. We have only one officer on duty who injured his ankle trying to manage the crime scene as he approached the scene and not staying focused on his surroundings and stepped into a hole on the ground, so really sprained his ankle, his right ankle. The officer was then transported to the hospital, he is on light duty as of this speak. I am also bringing in retired twenty-seven-year experienced crimes against persons detective out of Houston that can focus only on cases that still need to be investigated. Felonies, co-cases from felonies, murders that go back to five to twelve years with two murders cases that still need to be investigated. Case two zero one five zero two zero three dash zero two four zero four and case zero two two zero one five zero eight two nine dash zero six eight two. This detective has plenty of contacts within the city of Houston that has benefits the city when investigating major crimes along with high profile cases. A crime scene investigation unit will also be implemented. One officer will be sent to school in Dallas in February where he'll be receiving five days of intense training in collection of evidence and how to properly process and store the evidence for prosecution. I was able to make this connection due to my contacts in Dallas, therefore saving the city two to three days of what the original pricing would have cost. I will be sending one experienced officer to the crime scene investigation school February twenty fourth. He will also spend several days at the school working with Dallas Crime Scene Unit. This will allow him to observe and see how experienced crime scene detectives process their crime scenes. Having two officers on patrol at all times can help keep responding officers focused on dangerous cars where guns are involved, therefore increasing the chance of survival without any injuries or death. Releasing the hiring funds will help expedite the officer's safety concerns and will be greatly appreciated by the officers, including myself. Would like to implement a traffic officer down the old managed highway two ninety. This would create a safer driving environment for all citizens and senior citizens who actually use two ninety to get home. The traffic officer will only work traffic, he will respond to calls only when patrol officers are understaffed for that day. This strategy will help keep our citizens safe on two ninety, but still will also produce revenue that can be paid for the traffic officer and the vehicle. On community policing, I will be implementing a new unit called the N P O unit, which is neighborhood patrol officer. This officer strictly responds to long-term community issues that require more attention for long-term sol- resolutions. He will meet with the communities leaders, apartment managers, businesses, church leaders, elementary, I don't think we have a high school, but if we did, he would. So the long-term problems can have long-term solutions. The N P O is an extension of the chief of police for citizens to address their concerns for a quick resolution by setting up meetings with all community groups. The N P O unit will, will be vital to helping the chief to establish and implement the V I P program for the neighborhood, which is volunteers on patrol by, by, very important people volunteering on patrol, we call it the V I P. Abatement unit. This is a fourth individual team consisting of fire representative, one building inspector, one code enforcement officer and one police officer to help keep the peace while the team addresses these issues with the citizens. The team will work together to tackle fire code violations, safety abandoned property violations, health and welfare violations, moving forward towards the end of the second year, establishing an emergency crisis response plan along with the fire department to respond to large massive crises, training together so that we are prepared for any major emergencies response. Where we are all in the same level in communication, areas of responsibilities along with a setting up a command post to manage personnel, logistics, assignments, rescue operations, along with staging casualties, assembly areas. The cost, although when it comes to saving lives, cost should never be a factor, but it can be if not utilizing other resources. The law enforcement support out of Austin has certain equipment that can be acquired through the ten thirty-three federal law defensive logistics agency for law enforcement agency. But this will not be, this will not cover all necessary objectives. After discussing my strategy with the mayor, he was able to advise me of five hundred million development in several areas of the city acquired due to the development plan. Therefore adding a hundred, hundred, a hundred of jobs and hundred thousands of dollars that to, to the city property tax revenue on the next budget. Thirty-four million last year added almost four hundred fifty thousand to current budget. Several other investments will be added to the city's budget, over hundreds of thousand more in revenue therefore allowing the funds to support the new Prairie View police vision to take us where we need to be as a professional police organization. The police department is serving the people of Prairie View. We strive to reduce crime and provide safe and city-wide, recognizing that its goal is to help people and provide assistance to every opportunity, providing protective investigative enforcement services, increasing citizen satisfaction with public safety, obtaining community cooperation through the department training skills and efforts. And realizing that the police department alone cannot control crime, but must act and consent with the community and the rest of the criminal justice system. In achieving this mission, the men and women of the Prairie View Police Department will conduct themselves in an ethical manner. They will respect, protect rights of citizens as determined by law. Treat citizens and their fellow employees courteously and with the same amount of dignity with they expect to be treated themselves. They be examples of honesty, integrity in their professional and personal lives, thereby earning the public trust, perform their duties with the knowledge that protection of the lives and property of citizens is their primary duty and comply with the spirit and the letter of the code of conduct. No man in the wrong can come up against a man in the right and keep uncovered. This is a book that I bought, I got seventy-four of my brothers and sisters that died because forty percent of them responded to a call that was a two-man call. I keep this in my, in my bed. What we have here in Prairie View is a situation where we don't want another man on that wall. And it can happen, and I put seventeen in the ground myself, seventeen funerals that I went to. It's a serious business, it may not seem to other people, to other people it's, it is a number. To me, it's lives and they have families too, they have aunts, they have sisters, and they have kids. So all I ask is that if you can, is help me serve the citizens of Prairie View.
And you are, uh, I think in what you read, but I just wanna be clear for council, you're requesting the release of funds for provisional officers?
Correct, sir, we have four, uh, that, uh, ready to, uh, be hired. Uh, but we have them on hold, the process is already done, the backgrounds, the P Ts, everything's already been done and it's on hold until the city council and yourself can address the funds. We did have a detective, like I said, we brought him in, it was already allocated. He's, he'll be coming in and, uh, once, uh, the funds are released. We did have one that we talked about, it's forty-five thousand dollars to bring one patrol officer. That will give us everything we need to sustain two men in patrol at all times in areas where we can tag as high primaries like in the Pine Line, Pine Island area. And we can always be a, a supporter of ourselves and backing each other up. Uh, I know he has something he wants to say in regards to that, uh, if you allow him, he'd like to say it.
Go ahead, this has to do with council.
I just want y'all to know, I was, uh, a part of that shooting on last weekend, I came to relieve Mosley when he got, uh, eight twenty-six when he went down. I came to relieve him, then the following day, while I was breaking up a, a disturbance, we get another call. I'd been around that property about four times prior to that, the residents even acknowledged that they saw me driving by. That time, that second shooting, I recovered twenty-eight shots, all of them went through the house, by the grace of God, they didn't hit anybody. But once I entered that scene, my closest backup was three, was about three minutes out. I have to unhost it because I wanted into a scene, I've got people running across the street, I got people screaming and crying. You're scanning, trying to see if there's an active shooter still on scene. And when you're by yourself, that's just the worst feeling in the world, because you don't know who's friend and who's fault. Again, we had a baby inside, we had a infant inside, and three adults, nobody was hit, but you had, the house was shredded with, with bullets. It missed every peo- person by, or any person, at least by a couple of people. I'm requesting right now, I'm out here by myself at six A M. I'm clearing homes by myself, I'm clearing cars occupied four times and suspicious people in that. Nine times out of ten, they blow a smoke and you guys know what I mean, so I'm okay with that. But it's still not a good feeling because you don't know what you're throwing at the kids. Or you don't know what you're going into that house with that alarm going off and that door is open and you're by yourself and your nearest, uh, uh, backup is three minutes out. I had to get him out of bed at three o'clock or two o'clock in the morning to come help me on that scene because nobody else was available. So I'm asking, and I, and I encourage you two to ride with us, do some ride-alongs. Come out here and see what we're dealing with by ourselves and you can, I promise you, it'll be an eye-opening experience.
Thanks. Councilor Roland?
Chief Lopez, uh, thank you, uh, for the letter, thank you for the conversation. Officer Gray, thank you, uh, for your comments. Uh, we, uh, I think in our conver- conversation, how many officers do we currently have on payroll in the city of Prairie View at this moment?
We have seven police officers, if you count me, that would be eight.
Okay, eight police officers. And, and so the request, so we have, so it's eight?
Correct, sir.
And so, you, the, uh, we, was it three or four that we put in contingent?
Uh, that's.
Well, three plus the sergeant detective.
That's four.
So four total.
So four total, so, all right, total down, bring yourself to twelve. All right. Um. You made this a, now you said January twenty nineteen, I guess maybe I'm a little confused.
Twenty twenty.
Twenty nineteen, January twenty nineteen.
Twenty twenty.
I'm sorry, twenty twenty, I'm sorry, it's twenty twenty. It's twenty twenty, yes, sir.
Um, in, in this process, in your assessment, do you have, I mean, um, I think we, uh, my talk with you one-on-one, um, we, uh, had asked prior to the budget, kinda, uh, wanting to support the police department. Uh, your letter gives us some basic things to, uh, be able to show that we need to support you. Um, with bringing on these additional four officers, uh, you said you have already selected them and went through the process. Do you have that information that you, those recommendations you could share with us? Do you have the recommendations of the, um?
Do you have the recommendations of the um surveys and the the analysis you did? What are what are what are the high crime areas in in our community? Like, you know, you you, all those things, and so how do we, so hopefully, not at this moment, later down the line, we'll be able to get those answers, have a workshop where we can discuss those things? Um but the twelve police, the four additional police officers are the only thing you're asking for?
Yes, yes, sir, but there was that in- additional one that that we're trying to put in the work that the amendment to bring in.
I don't I don't know if we have that.
Well, yeah, we don't have it. Where would we get the money from?
Okay, we'll skip that. And we'll skip that.
Yeah, we're here to do the budget, man, 'cause we don't have it, so.
Okay.
So we have the ordinance and I believe Mister Johnson does have the attachment to it.
On which one?
On the police officers.
Yeah.
Not for the additional forty-five?
No, what he's asking for is just to release the funds that you are having contingency.
No, Mister Johnson, that's asked for additional forty-five thousand dollars.
No, 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 the forty-five is for one person, but.
No, 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 tell you that, you gotta read the item, the city.
I know the way it's listed, but let me tell you, let me just explain to you guys. If y'all will let me speak, please. We we discussed this. Okay, the twelve officers will staff his uh police department based on what was budgeted. Okay, and he's just asking you now for the remainder of the officers that are currently in contingency.
It doesn't make sense, so we're saying.
This agenda item says.
I know the way they do it. Go ahead, read it, it says five.
Forty-two thousand for an additional officer and to release contingency funds for hiring the three new police officers and police sergeant. So that's asking for a fifth officer.
Right, but no, okay. As far as dollars go, as far as dollars go, alright. He's he's asking to release, just release the funds. If if you release the funds, we can staff the police department based on what's budgeted.
Yes, but we're saying, Mister J J, we hear what you're saying. What is being commedical? This is not what the paper is saying and that is not what the Chief Lopez just said. And and so maybe we can just get clarity. But what but my question is, where are you pulling the forty-five thousand dollars from?
The forty-five thousand is a part of the contingency total.
Sure, sure, it's the total. Where 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 is that?
It was in the original, it was in the original budget.
So no, so if the forty-five thousand was part of the original contingency, we wouldn't need a budget amendment, we would just release.
No, 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 let me be clear. When you move the funds from contingency to spend them, that is a budget amendment. You have to take it from line item thirteen and put it into line item fourteen.
Yes.
It is, it is a formal ordinance which requires the attachment for you to actually do this.
That's part A, part B is they're asking for an additional forty-five thousand dollars.
That too is a budget amendment, and this was all to be done in one process.
That's what the agenda item.
But can I just clarify?
We we can't, all we can do of is the agenda.
Okay, alright. So, but it it, but the agenda says the forty-five plus the additional funds.
Right.
That, what I'm saying then is the forty-five plus the additional funds would equal what's in the contingency.
We're saying that there are four officers that are in contingent.
That's it.
Four officers, so.